Douglas Dunn here, Sandy Housman, and no indicated that she would not be able to attend. Nancy Pirana.
Here.
Jennifer Ginger Ryan.
Here.
Mike Schmidtser.
Here.
Mike Hablin.
Here.
Okay, you are here, great. Lewis Pollak. Counselor Layasont, the commission. Lewis, are you on? And Joe Ward, our staff Layasont, the planning zoning commission. And I'll have a call to the public, and that is, does anyone wish to speak on an item other than the agenda items, the three agenda items that we have before us?
Other than the agenda items, that's.
Right, other than the agenda items.
Okay.
So we'll move on then to agenda item one, which is the review discussion for possible direction to staff regarding auxiliary dwelling units. Joe, would you like to give us the background in terms of?
This is kind, this is kind of a, I think it's, it's more, it's a long-term goal of ours, I don't know, defined long-term, but that we're working towards, um, lots of research being done. And I sent out a lot of information regarding this to the commission to kind of go over and see what, um, what you guys were, how you were leaning with it as far as, I saw some of it that I thought was just really good ideas and such, and, um, I think it's really nice to be able to cherry pick and, and see what we like and what we don't like. The, um, I was very impressed with that, with that presentation on YouTube from Tucson. I really, I really thought that was something else. Um, I hope you, I hope you all watched that, but, um.
I agree.
But I wanted to kind of touch base with, with you guys, with the commission, I should say, and, um, find out how you guys were leaning on this as far as what you thought were good ideas, what you thought were bad ideas.
Oh, would you please clarify how, what are, how our current ordinance deals with auxiliary dwellings? I know that they actually use the word accessory living quarters, which is not defined.
Yeah.
And, and dwelling, the word dwelling is defined as something that has cooking and sanitation, sanitary facilities, and those are the only, the only definition that we have. And dwellings are permitted in R1, 2, and 3.
What happens, what happens is, commission inspectors is that we, currently we allow accessory dwelling units, and accessory indicates that is, that the use of it is accessory to the primary dwelling unit. So it's like an overflow. Sometimes people put, um, you know, they're teenage kids out there, maybe, maybe mother-in-law kind of thing, but, um, it's not allowed to have cooking facilities legally. We've got a lot of them in town that have, but those are considered, um, pre-existing and non-conforming, but we've, um, we're trying to find, we're looking at a way to make, to instead of having accessory dwelling units to, um, auxiliary dwelling units, which it, which allows for a full dwelling and, um, for people to be able to rent those out and provide low-income housing.
And where does it state in our ordinance? I couldn't find it where, where cooking facilities are not permitted in, uh, the silver, accessory living quarters.
That is because of the meeting, the definitions that are used in the building codes, Doug, for the, and I can get that too, since I'm here at the office, that works really good, but, um, the auxiliary, auxiliary dwelling units are considered, they're not, they're not a full dwelling, they're auxiliary, so they've got to have, either they don't have sanitary facilities, or, or there's, there's one of those legs that's missing. Let me go grab my residential code. I'll read you what a dwelling.
And then I, I have a question, when it's appropriate, if you could let me know.
Good. You can ask it now.
So one of the concerns I have is, what are the insurance ramifications? So let's say that in the zoning ordinance, an ADU by definition is not in our zoning ordinance, but it's close, and somebody goes ahead and God forbid, has a fire in one of their units. What are the legal ramifications that were perhaps in violation of zoning? The implication both to the victim and to the actual owner of the dwelling unit? And maybe that's not a concern of ours, but I've run into situations in construction, for example, when people do repairs, they're home, but they don't pull a permit, and technically they're in violation of the code, and henceforth, when insurance claim does arise, that insurance claim is then denied. So I'm curious what type of fine line we may be walking here to protect the city of Bisbee's interests, let alone the homeowner or whomever is dwelling in that unit. And I don't know if that's appropriate for this conversation or not, but it's something I want to bring to the table.
I think we're a little bit, that's a little bit outside of what the, the scope of the planning zoning commission is, but it is, um, it is perhaps something that we'll be able to, we'll be able to protect our residents, and that's always a good thing. And I would like to see if, if we go ahead and authorize auxiliary dwelling units, or I mean, um, yeah, auxiliary dwelling units, that they, um, that we legitimize a lot of these wildcat two-legged ones that are around, I think would be a good thing, too.
Yeah, and that's sort of what I'm leaning towards, Joel, is the wildcat construction, or the non-permitted construction that, as you and I know, and maybe Mike and a few others with a construction background, it has really some harsh consequences on multiple levels.
Yeah, I'm going to read the, the definition from the, from the, this is the international residential code. The definition for dwelling is any building that contains one or two dwelling units intended or designed to be built, used, rented, leased, let, or hired out, occupied, that are occupied for living, oh, hold on, that's dwelling. Let me quote a dwelling unit, sorry. A single unit providing complete independent living facilities for one or more persons, including permanent provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation.
Definition for auxiliary dwelling unit?
That was for dwelling unit.
Yeah, and what's the definition for auxiliary?
We don't have one. Then, I could, um, I could look up the one that's in the international zoning code, perhaps, but, um, we don't, we don't have one that we're using. We would have to define that ourselves.
Also in response to the last comment from Mike, and that is certainly, you know, Bisbee has a long history of, of what we call mother-in-law homes on the back of lots, and Warren, there's, you know, surprising number of them, a large number of them, that were historically, I think, rented out to minors, and some of which are not being used, others are being used, I mean, and so they certainly are grandfathered in.
Well, then you also have the, the potential, the potential for the Airbnb problem, illegal rental, and a slew of other things that follow suit. So I'm just looking, I've seen it in the past in a lot of other communities where the intent is very good, but it comes with a slew of litigious stuff that become, you know, ultimately then becomes a problem for the city and the homeowner.
So Joe, I, I read almost all the stuff that you sent, and the one thing that I do like, I think it was in, uh, I think it was in San Diego or something, basically saying that if it's a, um, a unit, it can't be rented for less than 90 days, which kind of takes care of the Airbnb problem.
I really, I really agree entirely with that. I thought, there was, there was a number of them that had that, I believe.
Yeah.
Then there were some designations of junior, um, auxiliary dwellings that had a limited number of square feet, which would accommodate some of the tiny homes. That may have bitten him, said, oh, no, this is, um, COVID.
Okay, there was, there was not a, going back to the, the definition, there wasn't one in the international zoning code, so I'm looking it up, and right now, I have a, a accessory dwelling unit is a legal and regulatory term for a secondary house or apartment that shares the building lot of a larger primary home. That was in Investopedia. I'll see some other ones here.
Can I make a comment while you're looking for that, Joe?
That'd be fine, yeah.
Yeah, the other thing that I liked was, um, each city seemed to take, um, like, have a different size for what an auxiliary unit could, the size of it. Um, I think that there's one, um, which closely related to basically Old Bisbee, but it was like, I think it was 600 feet, 600 square feet, then there was, one was 1,100 square feet, and another one was like 1,200 or so. A 1,200 square foot house in Old Bisbee is a whole nother house.
That'd be inappropriate, I think, yeah.
So I think we should definitely look at, you know, the size, because a lot of those lots, there's not very many lots that are over, let's just say, 5,000 square feet.
I agree entirely. I have another definition. This is, um, you know what, they're not, they're not really given a, it says, the definition has numerous descriptions and blah, 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 but it's not really providing me a definition I thought it was.
Well, my point is, is that we don't have a definition in our current ordinance.
Right.
You'd indicated when we, uh, earlier that, that it was defined as not having cooking facilities, and, and that certainly is not stated in our ordinance. Uh, Mike, did you want, you raised your hand, right?
Yeah, I did. Joe, is there a lot, we're talking about sizes of buildings, and especially Old Bisbee, is, I, and I don't know, is there a lot coverage maximum?
We do not have that.
See, I know from Phoenix, you can only have a 45% lot coverage.
Um, many places have that, have those, you know, percentage, we do not.
I think that would be incorporated into this, um, legislation.
Yeah, and to add to that, I, I think we should define there's lot coverage, and then there's also what's called lot density. And they have two different meanings, and the pain and the subject to interpretation, so it's a very good point to bring up, is what's the definition between, uh, lot density and lot coverage?
Michael, in a lot of the ones that I saw, there was, um, a coverage, uh, in the examples that Joe sent, and I agree that we should definitely take a, a look at that as well.
And again, I'm just, I'm involved in a lot of these things here in Tucson, particularly down by the university, where it's become very problematic, so, um, the other thing that's become popular is that people are now, they're taking tough sheds, and they're actually using tough sheds and dropping them down, and they're technically not habitable structures. So if we're gonna, you know, go down this ADU route, there, I think Joel, you would concur, and Mike and some of the others have a construction background, there's a lot of things here to consider with these units. You know, just a gazillion things for health and safety concerns.
Right.
Because, because, and it, yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I get the American Planning Association, their accessory dwelling unit, um, definition is, an accessory dwelling unit is a smaller independent residential dwelling unit located on the same lot as a standalone detached single-family home.
Okay.
The other concern we have, and Joe and I have been going round and round for about two weeks on this, is a lot of places on Old Bisbee, the sewer lines are over capacity, and adding additional living unit with sanitary and cooking facilities is going to increase the, uh, output and the demand on a system that's already over, over capacity.
And parking.
Yes. Um, my belief is that we should put something in the ordinance, I think we just need to define it a little bit better than just a granny shack or a tough shed in the backyard. It needs to be a fully operational and permitted structure with lot coverage, and then a percentage of, of the existing main dwelling or, or maximum 600 square feet.
Yeah, well, one of the, and I forget which one, but it even includes, like, say you have a house, and then you have, um, what's called a garden shed, and then the structure, the auxiliary dwelling, takes into account what's left of the lot. So if your lot's 5,000, your house is 1,500, the garden shed is another, say, 200, um, that was the one that I was most favoring, because it takes into account the entire lot, including the auxiliary dwelling, and if they have something else on the property. I think it was San Diego, I think, or Sedona was one of them. And one per lot, that was the other thing that they wrote into the code. It would be one per, per household.
Well, then they did say that they couldn't be, um, on wheels, um, that they needed to be a permanent structure. I don't remember which town that was, but, it couldn't be an RV that would then be moved.
The way that our, the way that our codes are written, Ginger, the only place that you could have that as a, um, the movable ones that built on trailer frames and such, would be, you could, you could actually have it on your property for 30, have it occupied for 30 days a year, but no greater than that, and it would belong in a auxiliary dwelling, or auxiliary housing park, which is to say, kind of like an RV trailer park arrangement.
Yeah.
Just as a point of information, these houses that are over by the ballpark, those Blue Moon bungalows, those are tiny houses, are those grandfathered in, or how do they fit in the picture?
Those are built around mobile homes, and they're grandfathered in, as well as they have the zoning for the, for the mobile homes, right there, that little, that one lot.
Do we need to, uh, sort of like, clear the decks by maybe going through the code that we currently have, and go through it, uh, line by line, and figure out what, which wording is constricting ADUs? Do that first, and then talk about specific items that we see as viable?
That'd be a good way to do it.
Well, currently, as I said earlier, there isn't anything in our ordinance about the word is used, but there's really no description of, of, uh, ADUs, and under what condition they will be permitted. That's basically nothing there.
Wasn't there some work done on the, with the issue of the big yellow bus?
Yeah.
I mean, I think there, I don't know, Joe, do I not remember that correctly?
The yellow bus? Refer, referring to what?
Doug, wasn't there's work done on the zoning code over the hoopla of the?
The, the yellow trailer thing?
Yeah.
It had like a concentric stairway on it, on the back, it had a big stairway, a big wrought iron stairway.
No, I think she's talking about the, the yellow trailer that was over where the Blue Moon, um, bungalows are.
The musical.
Yeah, there was a, there was a hoopla over that. There, there actually was, I don't believe that there was anything adopted in relation to that, but, um, it, you know, went from the, um, P&amp;Z Commission, and then, and then it was, it was, um, taken to the Board of Adjustments, and then taken to Superior Court, where they, um, the neighbors wound up winning, and the trailer had to leave.
And that was in the Blue Moon?
Yes.
So I'm just curious, um, the, the purpose of the ADU for Bisbee, what, what's, what's the goal with these ADU units? Is it to supply additional low-income housing? Is, is that the objective? Is it to, uh, affordable housing? Do we have a rental shortage? What is the underlying goal for these things?
We currently, um, Mike, I'm a Realtor in town, we have no, zero rentals on market, zero.
Right.
And, and, and so every time, I don't do rentals, um, but I do get asked that question a lot if I do them, I would say that probably in the last maybe three years, I saw it going lower and lower and lower. It's non-existent for about six months. Literally, there's not one on the market.
John.
So that's, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I think that, I think that our service workers and, and the people that, that work in Old Bisbee should be able to live there, or people who work in Warren the same way. I'm not, you know, limiting this Old Bisbee, but they have, they have a right to be able to live there, but they've been priced out of the market and such, and by having, um, the ADUs and limiting them so where they're not being used for vacation rentals, because that's not our aim, I, I don't think, us not, I can't speak for you guys, but, um, if, that, they have, they have a right to live in the community that they work in, and this would provide low-income housing in a reasonable fashion, and it wouldn't cost the city a lot, as far as our infrastructure, everything, since they'd be using existing infrastructure.
Or affordable housing instead of low income, affordable.
Yeah, I, I think that's a much better word, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So, so Nancy, then the understanding is that we have a shortage of affordable rental units for lower-income people. We certainly don't have a shortage of rental units for higher-income people, henceforth, that's why everything's booked, or rented.
Well, so we have a shortage of affordable housing, I don't want to say low income, I want to say.
Okay, affordable house, fair enough.
Affordable housing, because the housing, um, it, for example, in Old Bisbee or Warren or whatever, it's all taken up by Airbnb.
So, I mean, not to diminish the problem by affordable housing, is the problem then not a Airbnb problem? Because if we're allowing what would normally be rental units, affordable housing, or let the market dictate what is affordable, then maybe we should look at the Airbnb component, because that's what's decimated a lot of communities, or made frustrating, like towns like Sedona, Telluride, and other more affluent places. It has completely priced out the bartender, or the civil servant, or whatever, but, and then it really then becomes a free market for rental. So, of course, that doesn't solve the affordable housing per se, but at least it allows a market to fluctuate depending on supply and demand.
You know, another.
I'm not trying, yeah, I mean, I'm not trying to exclude an affordable housing component. We have this very problem in Tucson, where they're going into downtown, in what would normally be high-rent districts that also generate tax dollars and restaurants and everything else, and this is a constant battle with cities across the United States. In fact, you see it in New York City, where they want to put affordable housing in otherwise market-demand places. Is it fair? I, I mean, that's a whole nother conversation, but if we have a problem of affordable housing, then that's one issue that maybe can be solved in some way, shape, or form by not allowing Airbnbs, or limiting their use, because we're talking about an adaptable dwelling unit that is going to have restrictions on its ability to be rented out or used as an Airbnb. Then why wouldn't we do that unilaterally?
Mike, I think we're limited on being able to shut the door, the barn door after the horses are gone, you know, um, that these places are already existing, we've got a tremendous amount of existing Airbnbs, and, um, if we go through and make a regulation against, I think would be, it'd be a taking, and that's also can be inexpensive.
Right. You know, I mean, it's a problem we're faced with nationwide.
So, so there, so my, go ahead, Michael.
Well, besides the fact, Ducey went signed into law sometime back, you might know better than me, Nancy, some sort of regulation saying that cities cannot regulate Airbnbs.
They cannot correct.
So really and truly, I'm, I'm taking a 180-degree turn, if we allow these, you know, ADUs on the property, basically, they can become Airbnbs. We can't regulate them from not being Airbnbs.
And now, this is, again, this is not beating up the Airbnb, or taking it out of the dialogue, but basically, the most desirable place to have an Airbnb is Old Bisbee. It's not that there's not in Warren or San Jose, or, you know, other places, but anybody that, um, knows that, or they want to make money, they know that it has to be in Old Bisbee, um, or else they have to charge less per night, and it doesn't fit into their, the, the equation. Now with Old, Old Bisbee, um, I always say that there's between, just say, 600 and 700 houses in Bisbee, um, you know, in Old Bisbee proper, and I think, really, I think there's over, I think there's like 92 in Old Bisbee alone. Um, and the thing is, is if, if you are an Airbnb cleaner, for example, you might have five houses to clean, and you are coming from Sierra Vista, or Bisbee, or Warren, or someplace else, because you can't even afford to live in Old Bisbee. So the, uh, Old Bisbee always gets kind of, um, pigeonholed as different from the rest of 85603, and this is no exception, because it does cause more parking, it causes more trash, it causes, um, lack of affordable housing, but I don't think Airbnb or a platform like that is going away anytime soon.
And Mike Schmidtser, I think that, um, what Tucson is trying to do, and they've got awfully good lawyers of their own over there, and it seems like they were, they were keeping out the Airbnbs from the, um, the same as everybody else was, or a lot of them were, were doing, and, um, I think that once that they've adopted their, their, um, ADU requirements, I think it's maybe something that we can emulate, and with a lot of safety.
When will that happen, Joe? When will?
The way I took it, it was going to be, it was going to be, um, by the early part of May. What is what I thought.
Revisit this then, when that's completed?
There were some pieces missing of what you said, so I couldn't tell what.
Oh, when that's completed, can we revisit this issue and compare it to our regulations?
Absolutely.
Maybe as preparatory to that, do that cleaning of our current code and eliminate those things that are constricting to ADUs, so that we can at least have the, or at least have a, a preliminary document, so that we can figure out what will we need to do to our current code to make it more ADU-friendly?
Yeah, let me read you what we have on the, in the zoning code. The, um, for residential, Division 1, any one-family dwelling, excluding mobile homes, manufactured homes, including private garages, accessory living quarters, recreation rooms and private stables accessory to the main use. So there, these are showing that, you know, so there's only one dwelling that's, that's allowed on those, and if, if, if the consensus is to allow the ADUs, then those kind of, that wording would have to be entirely changed, of course.
Joe, from a geography perspective, in Old Bisbee, of course, taking into consideration accessibility, fire, health, and safety, do you have an idea of how many potential ADUs could even be placed in Old Bisbee? Do you have an idea of how many potential ADUs could even be placed in Old Bisbee? Are we talking, you know, a dozen? Are we talking a couple of hundred? I mean, I, you know, the, the topography alone of Old Bisbee is very challenging unto itself. So, I mean, there are a lot of lots, but there's no accessibility. There's no stairs, there's no nothing.
Right.
So I'm just curious, what kind of numbers are we talking? You know, to Nancy's point, you know, there is a shortage of housing or affordable housing in Old Bisbee. But how much more housing can even be built in Old Bisbee?
It would be speculative for me to try to guess how many people would want to do that. But, um, I would definitely hope that there wouldn't be several hundred. I think, um, we have a little uprising over there.
I mean, several hundred is a lot.
Well, that's what I'm saying. That's the number you used is why I'm saying that.
Oh, okay. Yeah. I, Nancy, do you have an idea as a Realtor or perhaps Mike or anyone else?
Well, just on the lots alone, it is very rare for a, a lot to come up in Bisbee. Um, so I would say honestly, if I, if I pulled like three years of, uh, lot sales in Old Bisbee alone, there's probably, now that's like through the MLS, so not a private sale. Um, I would say it's, it's less than, honestly, probably less than 10. Um, because if someone gets a lot, they quickly realize that in order for them to build on it, they have to almost double or triple their cost just to get the material to the, to the, to a property. So of the buildable lots, I'm going to say, let's just, let's just go high and say, there's less than a dozen in, in Old Bisbee.
So, I mean, by default, then how does that impact the, the, the affordable housing problem?
As long as the journey starts with the smallest of steps.
Yeah, I, okay. I hear you.
Also, I was going to say this evening, we talked almost entirely of Old Bisbee. And if we're talking about affordable housing, placing these in Old Bisbee, which is our high rent areas, uh, our high property values, doesn't connect in my mind. I mean, if, if we wanted to encourage this, it should be in Warren and Bakersville and, and San Jose. We're looking for affordable housing. And as I made the comment, my wife and I were out walking again, as we often do, uh, walking alleys. And I encourage you to do that in, in, in Warren. Be surprised how many, uh, these structures existed at one point in time. Not clear whether they're being occupied now and how they're being used. Uh, but there certainly were a large number of them. And I think, as I said earlier, historically were rented to minors, single minors. Uh, and it was added revenue for a property owner.
Yeah, and I would think areas like Tin Town would be a prime area that needs some serious looking at. I mean, those are really tin shacks. And rather than take away, and maybe that's not the right verbiage, but I, I'm not trying to diminish Old Bisbee. Old Bisbee is a huge revenue, revenue generator because of the gist of it's, it's what it has. And if we're looking for affordable housing, maybe there are some other areas that are not, you know, too far away that also could meet this affordable housing situation. Tin Town, for example, or small areas outside of San Jose or areas of that that are certainly, from a building perspective, way easier to build on. And also just, you know, geographically not an art, you know, it's not like Sierra Vista going to Bisbee. You're talking Warren or Lowell or, you know, San Jose or some of the local areas.
Well, what's the wishes of the commission here? I, I, uh, Joe started off saying, reading the Observer and, and all the various controversial issues. And I don't know that I want to add this, we, the one more of those controversial issues that divides the community.
But we re-then today, this summer, after Tucson solidifies their, um, regulation.
Okay.
Will they advance it for three months?
Okay. Likewise, a thought that entered my mind is that I would like to talk with, uh, Ken Bajer, mayor, and suggest that he send a link to, uh, the, uh, webinar or the Zoom meeting that was held in, uh, by the planning department in Tucson, which I, somebody made a comment, was very, very informative, I thought. Why would we do this? What are some of the problems and so forth? Uh, and that would advise council at least, as well as ourselves, then the background on this. Also, I like the fact in Tucson, this is being initiated by the city council, not by the planning and zoning commission. I would be hesitant to pursue this without having some backing from the mayor and council.
And just, I, I want to make sure, do we have a, an existing definition of an ADU, Joel? But we do not.
We do not have one that's adopted at all.
We, we do not. So I, I would like to make a motion that we work towards creating, for lack of a better word, um, what constitutes a, an ADU from a health and safety perspective? It has to have a foundation. It has to have, meet certain code. And, and at least at a bare minimum, put that in motion, because that's something that's going to have to happen one way or the other. The size of it can be determined later. The location, whether it's Old Bisbee or Warren, these other towns, but at a bare minimum for health and safety reasons, I would make a motion that we at least work towards a definition of, per code of what an ADU is.
A definition be a very powerful tool.
Does that, well then, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Do I have a second?
Second app.
Okay. Mike and Mike? All in vain. Pardon me? The comments?
It's not for action.
I would, I would just.
Pardon me, it's not an action agenda. Yeah, that's true. So let's put this on as an, as an action agenda item for a future meeting.
Excellent.
Pardon me, pardon me, I didn't, this is not an action agenda, my fault. Okay, are we ready to move on to agenda item two? Which is review discussion with possible direction, the staff regarding RV parking. Joe, would you like to give us some background there?
Yeah, there, um, we've got, we, we get a lot of, I fielded a lot of complaints from, um, neighbors who do, um, such as people in Old Bisbee's who's got people who have a trailer on their property that's in, that's obscuring a view or, um, you know, it's, it's a, it's an intrusion in the historic district in a lot of ways. If they're, even if it's parked on your own property, I think. But, um, it, and there's also the, the issue of parking it on the road. That, um, parking is, you know, we were talking about how this fits into, into the purview of the planning and zoning commission. But parking is definitely part of your, um, area of control. So what, what, we're trying to find something that is, that is fair. But is, it also isn't, um, it's not going to allow people to do with, if you don't want, I guess I should, shouldn't say what you're going to do. But the, um, there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of controversy that's been going on regarding people parking and even living in on the city right of ways and, um, living in backyards. And you try to come up with, with a, with a fair way to regulate that, that protects the, the rights of the neighbors, not just in Old Bisbee, of course. But, oh, but within the historic district, I think is an important part. And I think I was, they were, that the planning and zoning commission is going to be discussing this, uh, planning zone, the design review board, sorry, is going to be discussing this next month also. Because, because it, it keeps coming up and there's a lot of people who are very offended by the situations that go on.
Don't we now have an ordinance in terms of limits how long any vehicle can be maintained on public right of way?
We do.
Seventy-two hours, is it? What is it?
Forty-eight.
What is it?
Forty-eight, but it's not enforced.
Yes, that's the point.
I think there's, Joe, I think there's two issues here. Um, and they should be two different items. One is living units on private property, whether to, whether it's a trailer or truck or whatever on private property. And the second of all would be commercial trailer vehicles and motor homes being parked on city streets. And I have been, uh, a culprit of that. When I was doing remodeling down at the hotel, I would park my trailer, um, brewery bills for two weeks at a time. Um, I realize that's unfair. Um, but because especially now that we, we have our tourism coming back. Um, but the response from the police department is all I had to do was roll my trailer, you know, six inches forward and cover up the chalk mark and I was good. I think the zoning needs to be a little bit stronger than that, that yes, you can park your trailer. Um, Mike, you're in the same situation. I'm sure you're going to be bringing trailers and dumpsters and everything else down. Oh, but like 48 hours of usage, but then it has to be gone for 30 days before you can bring it back. You just can't drive it around the block and, and park it in the exact same spot. Uh, up here on Quality Hill, we have, uh, we have three RVs on the landing in Quality Hill that the people store them on the public right of way, because they don't want to put them in the driveway. They have room in their driveways to put them, but they just don't want to do that because there's free parking up here and it gets very congested on the weekends for guests. Um, and there's no clout to our zoning for parking RVs on the street, storing RVs on the street, which is a separate issue from what you're talking about, Joe, in Warren and, uh, San Jose, where people are parking their RVs in their backyard, hooking them up to their house and using it as an ADU.
We actually have a pretty good, we have pretty good code on, on, um, regulating those. And, um, we have real success when we, when I find them, that, that we, I can get the people out of them and, and, um, take care of that. And it's been very successful, but it's something that just keeps on popping up. I mean, it's whack a mole in a lot of ways.
Well, I think there's a couple of things there to Mike's point. Number one, you know, I have the same problem. You know, I'm going to be doing a lot of development. What we do in other towns and cities is you have to buy a parking pass. And it's just the cost of your construction as far as parking vehicles in a certain area. You have to pay for that because you're taking away parking from, from local people. Um, so that's one item to consider. The other, as far as RVs are concerned, RVs are not allowed to park on a street with people sleeping in them. It's a health and safety hazard. And that's why you have RV parks. Um, the third is that if somebody is parking their trailer, I know on Tombstone Canyon Way, right next to the Castle Rock Inn, there's a couple of people that have these small little micro trailers and they park them there. That's not, they don't own that parking spot. So let them either buy a parking pass as a revenue generator for the city or they've got to park it someplace else. I mean, the geography of Bisbee and where Bisbee is going is severely hamstrung by its viable parking. And that's going to prevent tourists and other revenue generating dollars to the city. I mean, if you have an RV, part of having an RV or a trailer is that you got to be able to put a place, put, put it someplace to park. And then, of course, you've got RVs that are being put in people's backyards and being hooked up and people are actually living there and renting them. And then that falls under the old ADU conversation that we just had. So I think if somebody wants to park their vehicle for an extended period of time on the city property, they should have to pay for a permit or some type of a parking pass. Number two, if they have a trailer, that trailer just can't sit there into perpetuity. They should either have to pay for that trailer to be parked or put it over some other, other storage yard and pay to park it there. Cause it's, it's depriving the city of tourists and we survive on tourists.
Well, none of the regulations matter if they're not enforced.
Well, Ginger, that goes without saying. I mean, if you don't enforce stuff, that's a pro, a whole other problem. I mean, we have to.
They're not enforced now. So maybe this needs to be a collaboration with the city police of some kind.
I can give you an example. Um, uh, I actually have buyers in, um, they are from someplace else. Um, they tried to get, um, uh, an RV spot. Um, they were unsuccessful. And so they, um, chose to, um, park their vehicle in two locations on separate days because they couldn't find, because it's, I, I explained that it was spring break. And they said, we didn't expect that, we, we couldn't find an RV spot. Well, um, so that's, that does happen when I have people coming in from town. They want to move to Bisbee. Um, they are in a motor home or a travel trailer and they have no place to park because, um, the one down by the golf course is, is closed. Uh, the other one, um, is full. And then to, to segue into, I've had people tell me that, you know, they're basically going to go drive around and they were going to ask for where they could dump the waste from their trailer, their travel trailer. And they're just going out in the middle of the desert, you know, out towards Douglas, Double Adobe. And just, they're not disposing of their gray water appropriately. Um, I've, I've had more than, more than uh, maybe a dozen people tell me that.
Those are serious fines, by the way, Nancy. If somebody is ever caught dumping their gray water or black water into the desert, that's some serious stuff. I can tell you right now. Um, just FYI, that's a big no-no for ADEQ.
Yep.
City of Bisbee should build an RV park and rent it out.
Well, I noticed in like Virginia Beach, they were, like you were saying, Mike, they have a permit process and it's an income generator. But I have a difficulty with anybody thinking they can take city property and use it for their own personal use. Especially in the long term, but a permit might be a way to at least get something back from it.
Well, to Ginger's point, it's, it's a code and, I don't know, code enforcement or some type of an enforcement issue. And it probably starts with some type of a permit that you hang in your windshield or in your mirror and you have to pay for it. And then let the, the individual decide whether or not they want to pay for that or they want to move it to some type of storage facility. Can't imagine that over, I'm sorry?
If you, if you have an RV, then you may indeed incur the cost of storing it someplace, not in front of my house.
Right. I, I would, yeah, I, I would agree. I mean, and you can't even park an RV anywhere in Old Bisbee anyway. I mean, you can't get anything more than a 20 foot, a 24 foot RV, let alone through subway street. You certainly can't get up the gulch and around those areas.
Michael, you might want to show them the place over on Quality Hill.
Where's quality? Where's that?
It's up by the Ironman. You might want to take a look around over there.
And what's going on up there?
They call it the landing. We've got three RVs parked up here right now.
Oh, boy.
It's a flat spot. It, it, when we go up past the courthouse and the administration building, past the women's center and, and continue up, there's a big open area that they call the landing.
And is that, is that city owned? Is that city land, Mike? Is that city property? So, I mean, there you go. I mean, it's just a matter of tapping on the windshield, you know, and saying, hey, and an ordinance that says, if you want to park here, it's X number of dollars a month.
No, these are property owners.
Oh, property owners.
They're property owners that decide to park their RVs on the street. Excuse me, not park, store them on the street. They go out of town for a weekend every two or three months and the rest of the time it parks on the street. And then when they have guests over, they. the rest of the time it parks on the street. And then when they have guests over, they uh plug it in to the house and let their guests sleep in it.
Well, no chain is any stronger than its weakest link. As long as Chief Ashevay and the men on the street are unable, not able to enforce a forty-eight hour ban, then this is all moot. I've complained to the chief before about people front, parking in front of my house. He said, I don't have the manpower to enforce. So we're kind of stuck.
Uh, is there a way to Joel, is there a way through plan and zoning to circumvent that? Uh, if if the police can't enforce it, can it be a zoning violation perhaps? And then they're brought up? Uh, they have a fine to pay?
Not on public property. It's not zone, well. I'd have to ask around about that, see if that's available. You know, I don't have, I don't have an issue with with um if I could write something and stick it under their, under their windshield like the meter maids do kind of thing, but because there's, it's not that there's that many offenders, but there there's they're very offensive, so they, a lot of people see it.
Well, the 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 problem is that if you allow a couple of them as Bisbee gains proper popularity and as this ADU becomes more of a problem, you're going to see more of these things start to develop and they're going to become big eyesores. Maybe not in Old Bisbee or some of these other smaller areas, but it's going to grow into the outlying areas wherever they can find land and and park their RV. And that's going to be a problem. So if the police can't enforce it, maybe there's something we can do from a plan and zoning commission to initiate some type of, you know, if I want to put a roll-off container, I gotta get a permit. Well, I don't like it.
Did I send you guys the um, the the regulations on on um RV parking and such that Sierra Vista has?
Yes.
Okay.
Can we not, Matt, can we not model Sierra Vista's?
You can. That's, that's just what I'm I'm thinking, uh, you know, go, I'll go over that a little bit tighter and um highlight some stuff to send. I think, I think everything should be, we shouldn't um emulate it entirely, but let's, let's take the best and leave the rest and um make it fit what we, what you guys decide to. But if you like all of it, then that'd be good, too.
In addition to what John was saying, I think uh this commission here needs to direct city council or suggest to city council uh to command the city manager to have uh Albert do his job. It's not, it, it's not that they don't have the manpower. They just don't care to do it. They don't want to be the bad guys. And they, and they they refuse to do it. Um, it'd only take a little bit of um enforcement before the problem would go away. But if you don't enforce it at all, it's just, it's just going to continue. You know, we got, yeah, Mike mentioned the two trailers on on Tombstone, which are recent additions. We got a recent, you know, on our landing up here, we've got a recent addition of an RV. Well, this guy across the way here is parking his RV here. I guess I can store my RV here. Um, so I I think maybe um I haven't read our code. I think it needs to be strengthened a little bit with a little bit of latitude so that when Mike or myself or their um, the other Mike over at uh the Royale needs to come down here and park his trailer on the street for twenty-four, forty-eight hours to unload stuff, that they can go ahead and do that. But not that they can sit there and walk Tombstone Canyon and park on the sidewalk for nine months solid with their trailer and use their trailer as an office.
Or the, or they gotta pay for it. I I mean, if they want to do it, then let them, I mean, I'd have to pay. I lived in New York City. I had to pay off the police. I had to pay off everyone just to 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 put my truck there. And if you didn't do it on a daily basis, holy crip, you'd have a real problem on your hands. It's just a cost of doing business. I mean, and the only thing I want to add to this is, you know, as a newcomer to Bisbee, I hear a lot that how Bisbee doesn't want to become, you know, I'll use Sedona as an example, and I don't want to lose the uniqueness that Bisbee has. But at the same time, I think there's certain things that as Bisbee evolves, such as trailers on the street and ADUs, we have to use some caution, but also be cognizant of the impact of these decisions on the overall community as a whole. And that's a difficult challenge. We're gonna upset some people. There's no doubt about it. The question is, how do we balance that? Uh, just as a general comment.
Well, it's always the goal to go for the greater good. Um, and I like the idea of taking a look at this Sierra Vista uh scheme and uh maybe all of us look at that in some detail and go from there.
Okay.
Okay, Joey, you can bring this to us at a future meeting. Before we leave this subject, I'd like to bring up a third element of this, and that is derelict, derelict trailers. You know, we're talking about derelict homes that are not being maintained. You gotta look, drive around and look at all of the trailers uh that are in backyards and so forth, that are filled with junk and so forth, uh that are fire hazards and uh, you know, some of them occasionally get plugged in and used, but there are just lots of these small trailers, at least around Warren, uh sitting on properties.
I know up at the top of Walsh, there's two burned out cars and a van that are just been sitting up there for a long, long time. And when we approach the people, they're like, we don't have the money to get them out of here.
The city couldn't get a record to go up there either.
Yeah, I know. It's a little challenging. And a settling torch, though, and chopping up into little pieces and, you know, but again, Joel, where do we draw the line? I mean, if if even if it's like in somebody's backyard and and it's just they're hoarding and it becomes a problem, what are our means and methods to enforce that without, you know, becoming the bad guy? And then, of course, I guess some might say that's sort of the allure of Tin Town or some of the other areas, that's just the cool junk that's accumulated over time. I don't know. I've, I mean, I've heard that before, but now I don't agree with it, but you know, if they don't have the money to remove the stuff and it's a violation, what do we do?
Damn it. This, when it's a when it's a violation, the city has the ability to um send in public works crews and um abate the violation and put the fine against the property. That's in our code.
And they don't pay the fine, and then what happens? Just
It's a lien against the property.
Okay, I mean, then we're the bad guy. You know, what are you, what are you doing to Bisbee? You're ruining all the allure of all the coolness that and I see John's expression. I agree, but I, yeah, I know, John, and I I'm with you on it. I mean, and there's, there's a lot of other people, though, that are going to be like, well, that's a cool old bus that's sitting in the backyard. And I'm like, yeah, but I mean, there's also a thousand cats that are crawling around it. I mean, it just, what, how do we, how do we draw, you know, how do we improve without hurting other people?
Our code allows one disabled vehicle on each, on each um and each parcel.
Okay.
And that that includes flat tires, broken down, I mean, immovable. That includes um no insurance, those kind of things. Nope, no expired plates, but only one. And that's, I think that is um pretty liberal when you compare it to other towns. But that's what the the city council has decided was appropriate for Bisbee and it tends to work.
Okay.
I'm also going to say that there's probably um more awareness. Um, I'm just going to say in the last five years um with the people that have lived here for a really long time because we had more than a a couple close calls with fire with, so whether it was up on Star with all of those propane tanks or um, you know, the 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 fire in on Naco Road, uh where a gentleman died. Um, and other things. So whether it's um sanitation issues, whether it's um feral cat issues um with all this abandoned stuff. Um, I I do think that even the locals that have been here a long time, if the information is presented in a reasonable um way, I I can't see even the, even people that have been here forty or fifty years, they're, they're going to completely agree. Because like that, like I said, the Star Fire and a couple of those other fires, um, that was a major hit on the community because those people, you know, knew those families or knew that, you know, that got that guy. I just think that we need to um however we present this to um, the public, it just needs to be just well thought through. And I think that they would actually make the change with us. I I
I mean, Nancy, I would support you in some type of Bisbee cleanup. I mean, we could do some type of a PR piece or something that, you know, make Bisbee beautiful again. Here's an effort uh to let everyone know that there's some changes and that we want to clean things up. And that's sort of a a soft sell of saying, hey, if you don't do it, Joel's going to come in with his cleanup crew and uh clean everything up.
Seems like there's a thing every spring, a group of volunteers goes around and fixes up, cleans up, uh, you know, disabled people and elderly people, they do things to in that vein. I've seen the flyers for it, so it does happen, but it could be ju- it could be amped up.
Yeah.
That that step up Naco.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah. Mm-hmm.
That's been commented also, last year the city did hire a fire inspector. So that's another individual who's out there in addition to Joe, uh, in terms of identifying you know, situations that can be a serious fire hazard.
I mean, I think you guys would all agree, the 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 ones, the backyards that are bad are really bad. And they are going to, you know, something happens, it's not going to be a a a pretty situation.
Mine.
It did happen.
Yeah, okay.
Happened several times. Okay, Joey, you want to bring this for our next meeting and let's do this, uh uh ordinance with your uh review of that in terms of what might be useful here?
Hey Doug, um, there's Mr. Robert Corvino. It has his hand up.
Yeah, it just, it just gave me an idea as you guys were talking. Hi there. Uh, some people probably would love to get rid of the junk in their yard, but don't want to spend the money. And I was thinking, what about uh hooking in a contractor who has a tow truck and a flatbed and maybe the Velhurst guys? And offer their services as an exclusive agency to the city for this program at a low rate. So that if I, if I have stuff sitting in my yard and I I really don't want it there, but I'd love to get rid of it. I just don't want to pay and can't afford it, you might get those people at least to clear their yards.
Okay.
We have a local hero in town. His name is John Sky. He works for Liffitt. They've got tow trucks, dump trucks, backhoes um and flatbeds.
Yeah, so as as long as he's making some money, you know, there's, there's an opportunity.
Okay, let's move on to the agenda item three. On the page here. Um, to review, discuss with possible direction to staff regarding increasing off-street parking on Upper OK Street. Joel, would you enlighten us on this?
If they're at the top, excuse me, towards the, towards the end of OK Street, when you get before you come to the downhill side from the um from, from Youngblood Hill Street, you've got, there's a, there's a city, a city parcel there. And um it's been, we're going to be putting it on the auction, putting it up for auction to to enable, um, because the the neighbors, Mike Foster was actually the um, the moving party, I believe, who started this. He had petition before council. But the city can't go in there and build retaining walls and for for parking up there because it's, it's, it's very expensive. And so um the answer was to probably to be able to sell, sell this individually in in smaller pieces or altogether to the neighbors to to be able to um build something there to enable them to park. Because the parking up there is pretty atrocious. And um so that was going to be coming to you guys, but we thought, but I thought that we could, we could take it tonight and um do some preliminary work on it. Because we don't have, we don't have, we're, this isn't the sale or anything like that at this point. But um to give you guys a heads up and to be understanding where and what we were um wanting to do and get some
There are street address on that. I mean, I don't quite know what you're talking about.
One thirty-five and one thirty-nine, okay. I believe you were given a yeah, um, there's the petition was was provided for you as well as a a county GIS map.
Okay, I missed that.
Yes, what, it's one thirty-five and one thirty-nine, OK Street. Mr. Foster's here. Would you want to chime in?
Okay, uh, so I got about sixteen of the neighbors sign a petition to have the city improve the public
Wait, I can't hear. We can't, can't hear you.
Mike, do you Yeah. Yes.
Can anybody hear me?
Yes.
You can't hear, I can't hear.
Can't hear me either.
You might want to talk.
Can't hear you, Mike.
Mike, you seem to be on mute.
No, I don't think so.
We can't hear you.
Mike, when you get it, when you get in a position where you can uh talk, let me know, let me know. Go ahead, Denise.
So, hi, I'm Denise Corvino. I live in Upper OK Street and um, Mike, I'm going to describe a little bit of what you've done.
Oh, yeah.
So, um, Mike Foster, i- in a spirit of of public good and trying to be proactive about a a current situation, which is difficult, that's soon going to be an impossible parking situation, put together a petition to try to increase the parking in the neighborhood. Um, and so that's as much as I'll speak for Mike because I I don't want to put words in his mouth, but my public comment, and I thank you for hearing it, is I'd like to note my concern at the direction that this is going. Um, what started as a proactive uh solution, as I said, in the spirit of public good, seems to be backfiring. Open, opening up the property for the potential to bring more people in our area and aggravate the situation. Um, and I'm not sure, I I understand um what Mr. Ward just said, trying to put it, put it in our hands. However, an auction doesn't guarantee that those of us living here would be able to compete with somebody outside built, buying up property. So my biggest concern right now is that somebody is going to have more means than us to be able to buy the property and and in and build on it. And the whole conversation this evening has been about the density in the, in Old Bisbee has been about uh parking issues and so on. So um I'd just like to put that on record. And my broader concern, um, and we'll see where this goes. I hope, I hope this isn't the case, but um, this experience is making me hesitant to reach out to my city representatives in the future. Um, just because I'm, I'm worried about adverse results. Thank you.
And if I could add to that, basically, it was an altruistic proposal to Joel and and the others to just clear some dirt from the side of the road. So we had more parking and now it's turning into a land sale, which we're probably going to then lose the parcel completely, like my wife just said. So I guess things can backfire when you ask for help. You can't expect maybe the outcome you're looking for, but this seems completely opposite of what we need to sell the property. We just wanted a place to pull over in two places where there's just, where there's just dirt and hill. And Mike, you know, was trying to help and I think if I could speak for him, I have conversations with him. He wishes he never brought it up. And and I'm, I feel bad about that because I was the first one to help him with the And and I feel bad about that, because I was the first one to help him with the petition, so the twenty people that signed. They're gonna hate us. Because we're actually gonna lessen the parking af- after bringing it up. To increase parking, it it it's having the opposite effect possibly by putting it up for sale, we certainly can't afford to buy it. So I I I wish that the matter could just be tabled and and we could just forget about it, let's take back the request if we can. Sorry to say that, but. That's how I feel.
Robert and Denise, you're, sorry about that. I don't, I don't know that there that the city wanted to sell it all in one piece, and if you look at that, it's 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 gonna be pretty impossible for somebody to build there. You know, it's, there's a lot better places, nobody's gonna want to buy that to build, but I, what we had kind of envisioned was maybe people buying. Pieces big enough to put up a carport or a parking spot there. And be able to, the neighbors could all, you know, have the opportunity. To to own their own parking is what we were kind of shooting for, I believe, not that we were gonna sell it to a developer who's gonna build condos on it. This is about, this is about trying to trying to help with that situation, but you know, the the attorneys in this world are are. The back, the backdoor rulers, and we we wind up with a situation where if the city cut that hillside back. And you park there and the rocks fall on the car, then the city's liable for it, and we've got to think liability all the time, and it it really hinders. Our ability to help in a lot of ways, sorry.
Right, and I and I and I realized that before you even thought of it, I was thinking, no one's gonna want to incur that problem of landslide on a car. So let's just forget about it then, it it would be better if you just. Abandon this proposal right now than to sell it, we're not gonna buy it, and and it's gonna end up being private, not public. Whereas right now, I know there's space for one car at least, just to pull over. Do you just, does, do you acknowledge that it it might backfire on us?
I can see where it could.
All right, thank you, that's all I'm I'm saying, and I I wish we never brought it up, and I know Mike, Mike wishes he never brought it up. And the twenty people that signed are gonna wish we never brought it up, yes, Nancy.
Yeah, Robert and Denise, I understand your fear. And I can tell you it, there's about seventeen agents in town. Including, you know, maybe four or five that come over from Sierra Vista. And I can tell you, you are absolutely right, it's a full-on land grab. People are buying sight unseen for the first time, you know, it's very real. People are trying to obviously get the most for their home. And. I'm not alone in having at least five or six buyers that I can't find anything for. And I do agree with you that because the power of whatever it is Airbnb. Or a developer or an investor who wants to develop that parcel. And then charge someone a parking fee. It is absolutely within the realm of possibility in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, because I have never been so busy in my life. And I came from Phoenix.
Well, we live at at one thirty-sixth and the DRB just granted three variances to build a house next door to our our window. Twenty-nine feet high. And and we thought, you know, when we bought here, we love the code. The 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 DRB code, we thought, wow, this is cool, this is gonna protect the the beauty and the. The space and just just our views are gorgeous out of all of our windows, we see mountains all around us. Now somebody got variances, and they didn't even have to fight for them. I mean, it was, it was such a discouraging process, Joel was there, Mike was there, Mike who who had to drop. I gotta say, man, we really got burned on that, and I feel like we presented our argument and the decision was already made. To give them the variances they needed to do whatever they wanted, they have a seven-foot basement. And then two seven-foot stories above that. And then a six-foot roof, and it's gonna be like living next to a a monolith. And I don't understand how that happened, and I'm an idealist, I'll tell you the truth, I I get burned by being. An optimist and an idealist, and I know you guys are a little more understanding here, I've been listening. It's a lot different than the DRB experience, and I thank you, and I just, and I know you heard us. So please think about the people that are actually paying their taxes, they're paying their fees, they're never late with a bill, they love living here. They're they're good citizens, they don't have barking dogs, they clean their yards, they they're improving their homes, they're preserving the historic qualities. That's Mike too. And we're trying to be good citizens under the rules. And just, you know, now, again, let, thank you very much, I think I've said.
Appreciate your input, certainly if. I think those who presented this petition have a legal right to withdraw it if it comes before us. For legal action, in terms of recommendation to the city council, there'll be another opportunity for us to discuss this. And make our recommendation.
How would we withdraw it, I mean officially?
I'd just like to add that parking. Is going to be and already is a huge problem in Bisbee. It's gonna be a big problem for Bisbee's future growth, depending on whatever it is you determine that growth to be, and it's not going to go away. So just keep in mind, as a as an overage of some of the things we talked about with ADUs and parking and RVs. If you have ADUs, you're gonna have additional parking problems, there's no two ways about it. If you're gonna have RVs, you're gonna have parking problems, so these problems are not going to go away, they're only going to increase. Down by the university, the city of Tucson is constantly criticized because of some of their zoning regulations for developers. And the biggest thing that's held that little community together around Sam Hughes. And West University and some of the other areas, that they have very, very strict parking guidelines, okay?
Permits, yeah.
Not only do they have parking permits, but the parking code is directly related to the number of bedrooms.
Right.
And the use. And so just, we should be cognizant of that, because there's no more room in Bisbee. You can't build a parking garage. I mean, you could, but it would detract, but there is no, you you are physically landlocked in Old Bisbee as to what you possibly can do. And that's coming from a from a developer. That would has certainly scoured Old Bisbee for opportunities. Not to capitalize on things, but just to, you know, opportunistically, I guess, and parking is a huge problem. So we all need to perhaps take another hard look at parking permits. The impact of ADUs and the parking associated with it, all those things, because it's not gonna go away. And if parking becomes that big of an issue to Old Bisbee. People at some point in time are gonna say, yeah, I'd love to go to Bisbee, but the parking sucks and I can never find a place to park. And then they're not gonna come down. So it's just my take on it.
No, I mean, we lived in San Francisco for years, and I understand, I understand parking issues. And they make, they make a lot of money on the meter maids going around in their scooters. And but you have to have huge enforcement if you're gonna have resident permits, I'm okay with resident permits, I don't, you know, we have two cars. I don't plan on getting a third or any, you know. I'm I'm okay having our share, whatever our share would be, I'd be happy with. I'm not, I'm not looking for more than that.
Okay, I'll move this on, certainly, this has been a topic that's come before the planning and zoning commission repeatedly, we've. Done study sessions in years past when I was on the. The planning and zoning commission before going on to the city council, recommendations have been developed, alternatives have been developed. At some point, it's gotta be a decision by the council to move forward and address our parking issues, certainly, I would have. You know, encourage you to speak with with your mayor and councilman.
How would I with withdraw that petition if we wanted to, no one answered.
Going to talk with the city manager, I don't know what the legal process is, I can advise you.
Okay, thank you.
The the your petition was not to purchase the property, so so that's right now, the the city would be the one who would be. Moving forward as bringing this property for sale, and we're the ones who can pull it back, so it's it's not a big deal. We're not, we're not here trying to hurt you, Robert, we're.
No, I know that.
We're trying to find an even playing ground field for you.
We've met you personally about the lot.
I know that.
So I I do remember your time, and we appreciate it, thank you.
I have. I have a couple. What it's worth there, the the Corvinos, I feel bad that this has sort of left a bad taste in your mouth. None of us want that, I walked up there on OK Street on the upper part there, and I saw there's a a big expanse of parking up there. And I think it's privately owned, so there must be some spirit of cooperation up there, there's bunches of cars up there. And so there seems to be a a nice little community there, and I'd like to see that fostered, I'm I'm sorry that this is turned into a bad experience for you.
You know, that's, thank you very much, and that's how it works, is if you know each other, you go, oh, that's Robert's space, I'm not gonna, and no one even says it out loud. You don't even have to say it out loud, you just say, there's that black car that's always there, I know where that black car belongs, and people respect that, they're not gonna. Gazump you when you go to Safeway. And and it's, that's what, that's what this is all about, it's about everybody. Everybody taking care of each other, and the same thing with RVs. It's all, all the problems you've talked about relate to everybody taking care of each other and not taking more than they. Are entitled to as taxpayers. You guys are.
Especially in these times.
Yeah, yeah.
Especially in these times.
So thank you for your words.
I had a couple of comments here, and then I'll make a motion. I went up there and saw the area, I don't think you guys should give up, maybe at this point in time, back off of it. But if there's a place up there to get additional parking for the neighborhood, I love, I love walking up OK Street, it's a beautiful street. But if you, you know, if there's some way you can work around it, right now, the city is under so much pressure with liability. You know, they don't even want to sneeze, so I would put this on the back burner, I wouldn't totally disregard it, I think you should come back to it. I'll work with Joe maybe and and look at what possibilities could happen. We do have a contractor in town that does very good retaining walls. And maybe he could, you know, you know, take that little area and and make it a little bit bigger. Also, I don't know what the what the land is zoned right now. But if it's not for housing, then it would be just parking.
Yeah, I was, I was fearing that somebody would just build a a parking garage there and then rent it, and that's, that's what. Somebody that had ingenuity several years ago did, in fact, I rented one of his garages for a few months, and it's cool, it's a cool thing to do, but this isn't the time for it.
I make a motion that.
It's not an agenda, so you can make a recommendation.
Doug?
Yeah, make your recommendation, this is, it's not an agenda item, so there's no motion to be made.
Well, okay, I thought it was. You know. At the PMZ board. Was just to drop this issue and have the city not put it up for sale.
Well, you know, you know, Mike, you guys are the ones that when it comes to you, you can turn it down if it were to come to you, and I don't think it will, but.
It's not there yet.
No, this was just, this was just preliminary discussions, all we're doing tonight.
I'm sorry.
It's good, but but when, if it were to come to you, you guys are the ones who can who can give it the thumbs down, and you know, the city council listens to what you guys recommend really strongly.
Correct. Long, we'll go around the commission comment, commissioner comments, this is the. The final comments on any subject, you know, we can't take any action on them, but anything you would like to share in terms of future agenda items or other comments?
I would just say that these are all really good conversations and positive things. That we can, if we can work together, Bisbee will continue to grow in in a positive way. And and help the community at large, so if we continue to focus on these things, and. I I think it's it's all going in a good direction, these are good conversations.
Okay. Other comment?
I do have a comment here. I got an invitation to next Monday's Board of Adjustment meeting. And one of the items on the Board of Adjustment. Is the division of the property at two oh two Brewery Gulch. That's the one where they built the retaining wall last summer, two summers ago. That had fallen into Brewery Gulch. And that. Action item went straight to the Board of Adjustment worth versus going to the Planning and Zoning Board. And it sounded very strange to me that changing the zoning or changing parcels. Should at least come to the P and Z board before it goes to the Board of Adjustment, because I thought we saw the Board of Adjustment was. Basically, an appeals board. And I like to see something done so that future divisions of land. Come to the P and Z board versus going straight to the adjustment. The Adjustment Board.
A point of information, is that, is that the area that's at past the city park and back up there by the Mimosa Market?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
It's the one that Lithic bought and did a a a new retaining wall, and they sold it to another party. It's got two houses on the property. And they want to break it up into four parcels, so they can put two more houses on it. And it goes against the current zoning requirement to have four thousand square feet per lot. They actually want to make two lots that are under three thousand square feet.
I don't believe there are two of them, Mike, just one that's under the threshold.
Okay. I I wasn't quite sure, but there is one that's going to be underneath that. The validity of the request. Is not in question, the fact that it didn't come to P and Z board, who I I think is. Very knowledgeable on the city code and and zoning should have the first crack at that. And I would look to see if there's some way we can change that procedure with the city so that it's not circumventing the Planning and Zoning Board.
I would agree, and Mike, that's a perfect example, if they're gonna splice that up into a little postage-sized stamp. Dwelling units, where the heck are those cars gonna park? That, I mean, let's not kid ourselves what's gonna happen there.
Hey, are there further comments?
Oh, well, I would just like to tag on to what Mike just said, because if they're building, well, if there is a sewer lines up there. How many laterals are going to be added? For the sewer, I mean, the the houses are gonna have to be hooked up to sewer, so then we go into the same exact issue that's up on Quality Hill. Where there's, there's no more, you can't add another lateral to the four-inch city main. So we're getting into not only parking, but we're getting into, if you're, if we're divvying up parcels, that has to have sewer on it as well. And now that we don't have garbage pickup, which is what I wanted to say, tying all this together, whether we're talking about. RVs, accessory dwelling units, no matter what we're talking about, we're still talking about. The fact that people were gonna be adding garbage, and there's technically, we don't know how long. But the city said it's not gonna resolve anytime soon, where we have trash pickup. And so are people going to store their garbage and then walk it down the hill once a week? Because now on my street up on Clausen, with we definitely have, I definitely have more skunks than I've seen in years. And that's up on my street.
Okay, further comments, and these are things to share with your city councilman. As well, I mean, certainly, we have an opportunity, I was not aware of this Board of Adjustment meeting, but certainly, you all have an opportunity to voice these same opinions. At that, on that occasion, on that meeting.
Hey Joe. Could you have nine of us send that whole invitation out to the whole group, the whole P and Z group, so they can see it? Would that be ethical? Would that be ethical?
Um, I, I, this isn't for discussion, but I, but I, I'm writing this down.
Good suggestion. Other further comments on anything? Do I have a me, or a vote, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we're adjourned and I thank you. This has been a lively discussion.
Hi, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Have a nice weekend.
Thank you.
So.
Have a good one.
Hey, Joe?
Yes.
Could you take a five-minute phone call from me?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. I guess we're the only ones here. Have we stopped recording?
No, we haven't yet.